Good morning, good afternoon and good evening Internet Society trustees. My name is Jane Coffin. I'm the Senior Vice President for Internet Growth at the Internet Society. I have the honor and pleasure of working with our fabulous staff on the growing the Internet portfolio of projects on the senior executive team. There are three projects in this portfolio. There's a building community networks or CNs, fostering infrastructure and technical communities, basically where the IXP Network Operator Group and communities to support them lives and measuring the Internet, where we have the great platform for talking about the health of the Internet, focus on Internet shutdowns and why they're not good, and other great things. So I'm going to walk you through what we had promised we would do in AP 2020, where we ended up and some of the lessons we learned. On the growing the Internet portfolio of this year-end summary, I would say 2020 was an amazing year. We learned a lot. There were some things we couldn't do because of the pandemic. Obviously, you know, we couldn't meet in person with people. So we learned really quickly how to take some of our flagship events like the African Pairing and Interconnection Forum online to appearing virtual series of events where we brought in sponsors, had more people trained because they could actually join online. So onward with the three projects, the Community Network Team at a meta level. We connected more people through Community Network colleagues and through other partners around the planet. We helped change the minds of policymakers and regulators, got language into the G20 Declaration on Community Networks. We're very excited about that. And we brought on more partners. So happy day with that. With InfraCom Dev, we beat our training goals online, and that's thanks also to the TEL team. None of what we do is in isolation. We bring in our partners to build a broad base of a pyramid of partnership. We never want to be a single point of failure as a partner. So back to InfraCom Dev and the IXP's, we helped more of the existing IXP's level up or become better with equipment, with some online training. Again, we learned it was hard to build new IXP's in a pandemic. So lesson learned. On the new Measuring the Internet Team project, a great team of people working very hard, very deliberately to establish a new platform where we're going to look at the health of the Internet and talk to governments about why shutdowns are not a good thing. We also are trying to attract more attention to our partners as well. Again, we're in partnership with so many other organizations, our data partners here in this project, that we want to shine the light on them too, because this is about a team effort to build a bigger, better Internet. So on the Building Community Networks Project, our AP 2020 goals are here. You can read through them. Clearly, our global summits and our in-person events couldn't do them. What we did do, voila, these are the actuals that we were able to achieve. We were able to help more partners online. You can see by this total here, the actuals were 25 versus 10. Number of entities that changed their policies were seven versus five. More in the write-up after this that you'll see. You can take a look later at your leisure. But you can see that we were able to work with not only the Saudi government, but the ITUD, the Development Sector of the ITU, more and more to change the minds of folks about the fact that complementary networks are the way to go versus just the old model, which we know under COVID has shown that the Internet is a lifeline, but it's also shown us that many people are not connected. So the number of individuals trained, we were just right on target there. We're going to train more people this year because we have a Train the Trainer Program in 2021. But here is the excellent work that the team did. You can read through this later, but you can see the deployments here, the policy changes we were able to enable, and the people trained. And so now we're on to the Fostering Infrastructure and Technical Communities project. This is a mouthful, but what it really means is this is about building more Internet exchange points, the technical communities to support them. All of these projects, I should have said from the beginning, are an intersection between technology, policy, and development. So we're looking at all those aspects or vectors and constantly looking at the meta level, how we can look at the global, the regional, the local levels. Because one of the things that the Internet Society wonderful staff helps us do is really take things to a local level, understand what the local circumstances are. We never go where we're not asked to go. We're always working in partnership and our goal is to strengthen and enable people on the ground. Really build those communities of interest. You can't build a bigger Internet without more humans who know how to run it and who are technically trained. So on this project, again, here's what we had for AP 2020 goals, training, infrastructure support, definitely a lot of in-person events, and here's where we wound up. On the new XPs, we found that during a pandemic, it's very hard to go places when you can't go. But it's also our model wasn't as flexible, I think, for, and I've done some of this training myself, for the on-the-ground work to be transferred to online. We've mastered that. We figured out how to do it for this year. Existing IXP's, we were able to get definitely switches and servers out. We were able to get optics out. We have a new partnership with Flex Optics for that. So we were able to help lots more IXP's virtually, because this also meant that we could reach people online that we may not have been able to reach with our in-person events. Lesson learned, lots of good pre-work can be done online before we have an in-person event in the future and/or we create a new combination hybrid approach. This will be for this year. But last year, number of partnerships, lots more people brought in to work with us. This is everything from some of the regional Internet registries to local folks on the ground to companies like Terraco, Facebook, and others who are good partners with us on the ground, helping us to do training and now virtually to do training and to support the work we do. I would love to say here also, please note that the team was able to bring in sponsorships for some of the virtual events. It was excellent. Number of individuals trained exceeded our expectation. This is thanks also to the TEL team. We really appreciate the new work with Rhonda, Esther, and team, and so this is something to look forward to moving forward. Note that we'll have new training coming on in 2021 based on some of the old training. For those of you that know Afronik and AP Nog, sorry, Afronog, this was an absolute, this Net Ops training was something we had worked on with AFNog in the past to make sure that we provided what was called a zero-level training so that when people would come in person to the AFNog events, they would be ready to roll, ready to go, had had basic training. We took that online almost four to five years ago, and we've been improving it ever since, and we're looking at new improvements with TEL moving forward. So here you can see some of the key things we learned. Again, what I mentioned before, as a result of the pandemic, virtual engagements increased our reach. Cons, the pandemic hindered our ability to deliver on goals. Lessons learned, we have to leverage our cross-regional expertise. This is bringing other staff from other regions into the projects, which has been a huge success with the reorg and work across the different partners that we have to rely on them more and more for sustainability purposes. Measuring the Internet, AP 2020 goals establishes community around data collection and contributing data to support collaborative Internet measurement results, develop initial sets of metrics, other, other, and develop web-based dashboard and launch for public consumption. We met those goals. This team had really done, has really done a great job. They're new, they're small, they're agile, and they're working across the org and with partners around the planet. So they launched the platform early in December. You'll hear more about the fact that from the team, they've given you a recording and some data, I believe, about the new launch. They've had to rebrand, which was something that I will, I want to say to all of you, they really dug in, embraced the fact that they had to rebrand, and they did. So now this is now the Internet Society Pulse Platform versus Insights. So the public launch for the Insights Platform was on the second. We relaunched by the end of February this year with a new platform. But back to 2020, number of project-specific partners, we exceeded that, went over that. This is a very deliberate partnership, so it's not all data partners across the planet, but we're trying to bring in more and more in a deliberate, methodical fashion. Number of use cases developed. We've got those four use cases developed. This helps exhibit and show why certain technical aspects of the Internet are important for the health of the Internet, why certain shutdowns by governments are not a good thing for the stability, integrity, and the perception of the strength of the Internet. Here's more about the Measuring the Internet year-end summary from the team. They, despite COVID, the team was able to do what they needed to do. They reached out, they published more blogs about the health of the Internet, which also brought some good reputational focus on the Internet Society. So I'll leave this to all of you to have a look through later. If you have any questions, please contact me coffin@isoc.org. Coming through Kevin would be easier, of course, because Kevin will be able to reach me at any time and let me know if you have questions. So again, thank you for your time. Thank you for your support. And please know you have a wonderful group of staff to support us and also great partners around the world. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Joseph Lorenzo Hall. I'm the Senior Vice President for a Strong Internet at the Internet Society. I have received a strong project portfolio. In 2020, that included five projects, Internet Way of Networking, Encryption, Securing Global Routing, Time Security, and Open Standards Everywhere. I think it's safe to say that 2020 was a remarkably successful year for a strong Internet. It started off very uncertain. We at ISOC had a reorganization we were dealing with, sort of a new way of working, and then the global pandemic and all the associated fallout from that. I think it's safe to say that a lot of us thought maybe we'd get half of what we planned done over the course of the year. But when it all came down to it, we got almost everything done by being creative and resourceful. In terms of the projects themselves, I'll give you a quick overview, then we'll go into some detail. Routing security manners, you may know it as, continued to evolve and grow beyond our wildest expectations. Iwan and Encryption started new in 2020 and very aggressively jumped out of the gate and hit the ground running. We had a number of remarkable successes in the area of open source web standards and web servers. We decided to close that project out and transition those activities to maintenance and training. I'll talk a little bit more about that. And time security was also highly successful, although we didn't decide to continue that project in to 2021 for a variety of reasons. And when we get to challenges and lessons learned, I think we started to realize that in-person interaction is a wonderful thing, and remote interactions don't do all that we'd like them to do. But we have to find ways to put those pieces of affect, those things that we really need for synchronous communication back into how we do our projects and how we work with both people internally and externally. In terms of lessons learned, I think the most important lesson we learned is going from not just counting things we do as being sort of task completion as being measures of success, but instead measure how those tasks actually change things in the world. So make those our goals and then assess impact indicators that we may not be able to directly control, but sort of show if the world in general is going in the direction that we want to. We have that planned for 2021. Getting into the specific project, starting with Iwan, these are very worried slides. I'm not going to go through them all. You can review them on your own and get back to us, to myself or our project leaders or my project policy advisor, Anna Higgins. Iwan started off with the goal this year of defining the critical properties of the Internet with our community and with peers and academics, and they succeeded and created not only the very compelling articulation of what the critical properties of the Internet are, but they created an Internet Impact Assessment Toolkit that you can use, that anyone can use to assess how particular proposals might affect how the Internet works. In terms of actual metrics, we sought to get a bunch of mentions of our the Internet Way of Networking Framework and succeeded by a factor of three, more than what we wanted. And we were able to work on a number of specific use cases to show how to exercise the framework. There's a lot of summary information and lessons learned here that I can't go through, but I can say that I just don't have the time. The Internet Way of Networking is set up well to extend the framework and continue to actually put it in the practice in terms of advocacy in 2021. The encryption project's goals were very simple. They wanted to make sure they compel, they developed a compelling narrative so that people understood why protecting end-to-end encryption is important. And then they wanted to bring people together, actually, excuse me, build a coalition of organizations that all have similar and experts that have similar ideas about encryption so that we can pool our resources to fight the coming battles, and this year is going to be quite a challenge. Excuse me. In terms of metrics for the encryption project, you can see we trained a number of people specifically about encryption advocacy. We were able to grow our global encryption coalition larger than we had thought and had a bunch of engagement from those members. We didn't see any particularly bad proposals that would have affected encryption, although this year, 2021, is a very different situation. Again, let us know offline if you want to know more about these things. But these are sort of talks about things we've learned in doing the advocacy in 2020. In terms of routing security, this is a mature project that is evolving and growing past our wildest dreams. They wanted a double manners membership, actually stand up the Manners Observatory as a more production service-oriented service, web service. And in terms of metrics, you can see just from this chart that we've been amazingly successful attracting new manners participants by training people, even being creative in terms of creating ambassadors and fellows program that could proxy train for us in regions we can't travel through because we were grounded throughout 2020. Again, we've had just amazing successes, major platforms in the cloud area. They decided to adhere to the manners actions, including Microsoft, Amazon, Google, Cloudflare, VeriSign, and others. It's just a gangbusters year, and we're looking forward to 2021 seeing even more growth and additional kinds of ideas in terms of routing security. Time security, wanted to make sure that there was a test bed available for testing new implementations of the new time security standards that came out in 2020, and then establishing metrics and measurement infrastructure to track certain kinds of future deployments of secure time. We did not create the deployment metrics and measurement for tracking secure time. Instead, we set up a bunch of sort of things that we thought were necessary for time to have a community and to see some of the things we've seen in other standards. We have a test bed with five secure time nodes up and running you could test against. We presented quite a few times about time security to various areas, and then we published best current practices about actually running a good network time protocol. You have to run a good, to run a good time before you can run a secure time. Again, can't go over this. We did do a lot of work in terms of advancing network time security. Those activities, since the project is not continuing into 2021, will continue in small part in the InfraCom Dev project, understanding that IXP's often need secure time. Another project that is not continuing in 2021, the Open Standards Everywhere project, but was amazingly successful. And that's the reason, one of the reasons that is not continuing is that we've sort of done what we set out to do. In this area, we wanted to make sure that we had the ability to deploy four reference servers that were super secure using all modern web standards and all the open standards we know and love. Not only did we do that, but we realized in the process that we needed another kind of server, that instead of just web servers with CDNs on the front, many people use hosted web servers, so things using cPanel or other kinds of hosted solutions. And then we needed guidance for people who wanted to improve their web servers, even in a hosted environment. As you can see, we have amazing compliance from our partner internet.nl's test suite in terms of security and interoperability and modernity of the protocols that our web servers use, both in our corporate web servers and in our community. And we have published a number of step-by-step guides so that people can do this on their own. We will be updating those guides, especially when HTTP three or quick hits the streets later this year. And because we want to make sure it can support that. Again, OC was amazingly successful, hit all its goals. When we decided not to continue the project, number three there promoting the server ecosystem became a little less of a priority, so we didn't actually do that. But you can see that the impact has been pretty amazing in terms of chapters doing things on, on the ground with their hands and others actually making secure interoperable web standards exist. Thank you.
Hello, members of the ISOC Board of Trustees. I'm Renalia Abdurrahim. This is the third part of the presentation on the end-of-year achievements report on the implementation of the 2020 Action Plan. I'm going to cover the section on building our community, extending our voice. The work in this area is largely driven by teams that report to me, and they are Content and Marketing Communications, Community Engagement, External Engagement, Training and E-Learning, Planning and Reporting, and Strategy and Impact Measurement. And my assistant Sarah Dumont is joining me today to help me with the recording. Let's go to the first page of the report. This is the highlights on this section. First, I'd like to touch on our operating environment. As you know, 2020 was a challenging year. We experienced a global pandemic, which is still ongoing. But it became an opportunity for us to promote the Internet more effectively, and we literally seized the moment. We focus on virtual engagements, and in the beginning, we were quite worried on whether or not we were going to be able to achieve results as we were used to. But surprisingly, virtual engagements yielded results and brought broader audiences to ISOC. Despite difficult circumstances, we were also able to mobilize significant external support and resources for the organization, including funding and partnerships for projects and non-project activities. In terms of building our community, I'm pleased to report that healthy ISOC chapters in good standing increased significantly, mostly due to staff effort. Individual members continue to grow, and sometimes we don't even need to do anything. Membership keeps growing, especially in developing regions. Our organization members unfortunately decreased due to various reasons, including adverse economic conditions. Nevertheless, we were still successful in convincing new organizations to join ISOC. The ISOC community across all segments were interested in projects and other activities, particularly training-related, and we successfully enabled their participation and involvement in projects. And finally, on extending our voice, ISOC received unusually high media visibility last year due to the proposed PIR transaction. While PIR dominated media attention in the first quarter and the second quarter, we gained some high-profile top-tier media attention in the second last, second two quarters of the year that focused exclusively on ISOC's work. And our social media following also grew. Let's go to the next page. This is the first goal under the non-project part of the action plan. And the goal is to undertake a focused, coordinated effort to understand the community's interests better and improve our ability to connect interested community members with opportunities within projects. What we did was we encouraged the community to identify what they're interested in in terms of projects in the first quarter, and this information was used continuously throughout the year for our teams to send out targeted communications about project activities. We also carried out five community consultations and two consultative policy development processes. And the feedback received was integrated into our work and shared back with the community through the dashboard that they can access. I'm pleased to share with you the key results. Fifty-nine percent of organization members got involved in projects. Forty-nine percent of chapters in good standing got involved in projects. Nearly 2,000 individual members got involved in projects. Seventy-seven percent of chapters in good standing participated in chapter training, which included project content. And 68% of training participants implemented initiatives locally post-training in support of projects. Let's go to the next slide. This is goal number two. Mobilize community members to achieve shared objectives and enable them to become a part of a larger movement for a bigger and stronger Internet. And here are the achievements. The ISOC community got involved in projects as a result of effective mobilizations. I just went through the key results from goal one, where we saw involvement across our community sectors, chapters, individual members, and organization members, and we hope to grow the percentages in 2021. The second achievement is that our community members were regularly informed about opportunities for getting involved. We did this through monthly newsletters. Our average open rate for the newsletters is slightly higher than the Association Industry Standard. Our average open rate was 26.5%. The industry standard is between 20 to 25%. Our community members also received training to be better equipped to participate in the movement. There were a lot of training-related activities last year. We delivered 14 ISOC-led courses, three partner-led courses, and 44 learning events to our community. And our global chapter training course delivered 25 courses in three different languages. We also delivered online campaigns to showcase our community's involvement in the movement. There are two that I'm highlighting here. We are the Internet Society Social Media Campaign, which was aimed to inspire and cast a light on the people within our community. And this campaign highlighted their contributions in building a bigger and stronger Internet. This campaign helped to drive traffic to our 2021 Action Plan on our website, and it received a high number of clicks within just 10 days, and the campaign is still active today. The second campaign that I wanted to mention is I Heart the Internet Campaign, which casted a positive spotlight on the Internet during the global pandemic, and it gained momentum and evolved to be the theme and call to action for our 2020 Chapter-thon, where chapters contributed do-it-yourself manuals and tutorials for activities that showed how they are helping to ensure the Internet continues to be a lifeline, enriching people's lives during COVID-19 and beyond. Let's go to the next slide. Goal number three is build a robust support base of new community members, including digital natives and organizations whose business models rely on the Internet. In terms of achievements, we've made some improvements to support our individual members. We completed the discovery phase for developing a plan to build individual membership. This work will continue this year, where we want to validate the findings of the discovery. And improvements from the discovery phase were implemented from initial recommendations. This include improved signup experience and member service, improved communication with members, particularly through newsletters and a dedicated community Twitter account, and better understanding of our members via surveys. We also worked on our Early Career Fellowships Program to target digital natives in particular, and this program, I'm pleased to say, is ready to launch this year. So we completed the design phase last year, and we secured three key partnerships, and this fellowships program will be launched in March 2021. We also reached agreement on the approach to diversify the organization membership base, and we agreed to focus on lower-tier membership, specifically copper, bronze, and silver. And a digital marketing campaign targeting these tiers will be launched in 2021. Next slide. This is goal number four, which is to build partnerships, foster governmental and intergovernmental relations, and pursue fundraising opportunities at global, regional, and national levels. And here are the achievements. We managed to grow our partnerships. We achieved a total of 26 MOU partners around the world, which literally covered every region, every region, including the global category. Nearly half of these partners are new, and we successfully aligned 85% of all partners with projects, which is quite high. We also successfully aligned all of our institutional relationships with IGOs to projects. That's 22 relationships with intergovernmental organizations. And we also aligned more than half of our relationships with academic institutions with projects as well. We also managed to raise funds for the organization. 2020 was a challenging year. We didn't think that we could manage this well, but results were surprising for us and encouraging. We exceeded our aggregate fundraising target for fund source from the ISOC community. It's 1.9 million, more or less, which was 42% above target. And this source of fund include individual donations, membership, organization, membership fees, and sponsorships from ISOC organization members. We also exceeded our aggregate fundraising target for funds raised from non-ISOC community sources, and we reached 1.1 million. This is much higher than the target that we set for ourselves, about 265%. And 94% of the funds raised, we raised for projects. While our sponsorship revenue in this category was below target, but the gap was more than adequately covered with grants. Let's go to the next page. Goal number five, undertake targeted programs to connect individuals to vibrant communities that help build the Internet, including the ISOC Policy Fellows to the IETF and youth at the IGF. And the achievements, we managed to deliver the Youth at IGF program. More than 600 young people applied and 30 were selected. This is a very special group of people. The IGF Youth Ambassadors received training and networking opportunities provided by three program sponsors and seven partners. So it is a collaborative program. All the participants delivered briefs and plans for local projects that contribute to grow or strengthen the Internet. And generally, we tend to find the youth involved in this program to be extremely inspiring, and we look forward to continue our relationship with them as the years progress. We also managed to deliver the ISOC Policy Fellows at IETF program. It was a little bit challenging to deliver this activity, particularly because it was online. And there are three IETF meetings in the year, and we only managed to do it for an event tied to one of those, one of those meetings. So the program moved to a virtual format in line with the online IETF meetings for the first time. We had some glitches and we had to learn from it. Only the second edition of the program took place with 10 confirmed attendees who predominantly represented governments in telecom regulatory authorities and ministries. This year in 2021, we will aim to adapt the program better to the virtual format, and we hope to have better results. Next, please. Goal number six, continue to spread the word broadly about the work of the Internet Society community and its partners towards our shared vision. This is all about our presence in the media, essentially. We received many feature and headline mentions in the media. We achieved more than a thousand feature and headline mentions, which was high. It was a hundred and eighty percent above target and it was unusual. Between the first and second quarters, the bulk of total mentions focused on the PIR transaction, which is not surprising. But some attention was also paid to the topic of Internet resilience, given the global pandemic. Between the third quarter and the fourth quarter, we began to see more interest on bigger and stronger Internet topics. And we hope to continue on that growth trajectory this year. We also received a high number of media inquiries. This was also unusual because typically organizations don't receive a lot of media inquiries. We got fifty-three, which was sixty-five percent above target. And they came from some top-tier outlets such as the Wall Street Journal in the US, BBC in the UK, The Street Times in my part of the world in Asia and others. Specific project-related issues where we achieved high-profile opinion-shaping coverage included encryption, the IWM Project Internet Impact Assessment Toolkit, and speaking up against threats from China and Russia, and also Section 230 Internet legislation in the USA. Our social media following also grew. We grew by sixteen point seven percent, which is slightly over the target that we set for ourselves. And we ended with more than eighty thousand social media followers. And growth occurred particularly on LinkedIn and Instagram and was primarily organic. This means that doesn't require a lot of push. People were somehow interested in what we were doing. And we'll continue on improving our social media approach in 2021. Next goal, please. This is goal seven, revamp the Internet Hall of Fame and deliver the Postel Service Award and the Network and Distributed Systems Security Symposium, NDS. So we managed to revamp the IHOP program and the revamp is completed. The work plan for the program has been streamlined and we've improved processes and procedures in consultation with the IHOP Advisory Board. In terms of the Postel Service Award, this award was presented to Onur Purwo from Indonesia last year. The nominations received were three times more than the previous year, which is great. And it's a result of expanded publicity channels and better integration between the Postel Service Awards community within the ISOC community itself. And so we're starting to leverage on synergies. Other improvements made included enhancement of the nomination procedures with better transparency of the selection process and focus on ISOC's thematic areas of interest. So slowly but surely, we're beginning to align what we work on with our themes for bigger and stronger Internet. Network and Distributed Systems Security Symposium, NDS. This is a premier academic research conference. We are quite proud of this symposium. It is ranked among the top five security conferences of the world. And last year, this event was face-to-face. It was onsite. It was quite lucky to be able to do this. This year, we're trying for the first time a virtual event. And I think Andrew will be able to report to you on the success of this after the end of this quarter. We have some of the results already. A lot of activities happened. There were a lot of peer-reviewed academic papers, posters were shared, there were some workshops and there were two keynotes on key topics. Nearly four hundred and fifty people participated in the event and it brought in sponsorship funding, about sixty-one thousand in total. Let's go to the next slide. That's the end. So I hope you've enjoyed learning about the successes of the Internet Society and we hope to improve on the results for the 2021. Thank you very much.
Hello. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening to everyone. My name is Sebastian Belagamba and the Vice President of External Engagement. And I would like to thank you for this opportunity to present on the developments of the new fellowship programs that were launching this year. As you know, as you have approved already, there is two parts of this program, the Early Career and the Mid-Career Fellowships. We are launching in 2021, the Early Career one. And that's what I'm going to present you now. There are good news on this front. Let me get back to what we're trying to achieve here. It's our vision regarding this fellowship as approved by you at the board is that we would like to empower internet champions around the globe and across technical and policy areas to contribute to the development of the Internet, ensuring that the Internet remains open, globally connected, secure and trustworthy. There is basically three goals that we would like to achieve. Increase and create capacities in internet champions. We would like to empower a creator of talented early career professionals. And we want to ensure that the next generation of internet leaders embody the principles of openness and collaboration. So for this fellowship, the Early Career Fellowship, we have designed the program as a twenty-four weeks experience. The cohorts will be up to fifteen fellows. There will be two cohorts annually, with the exception of 2021, in which, as we're starting in June, we will run just one cohort in 2021 and in 2022 forward, we will have two cohorts a year. And at least for this year, it's going to be a hundred percent a virtual experience. There is, we have designed a very strong program for these fellowships. Basically gathering all the input that we had from the community. I remember that we launched consultation on this and there were several calls with our community in order to gather inputs. So the main issue that we heard is that we want to couple the need that the community expressed for deeper connection and deeper learning with our members and to be, this experience to be a practical one. So we have designed the program with four pillars. And we are thrilled to tell you that for the academic bit, we have engaged with two very prestigious organizations and persons. One is Dr. Laura Denardis and the second one is the Oxford Institute of Internet Institute, that will support us on the academic bit of this fellowship. We are focusing on two other pillars, interactive learning. Fellows are going to run a project and are going to be mentored to do this project. And there will be a finance symposium in which all the fellows will end up presenting the project they have been working with. So we're going to work on their presentation skills, their relationship skills, the collaboration skills and the project management skills. This is the rough curriculum for the fellowship as planned. The first module that is led by Dr. Laura Denardis will focus on understanding the basics of the internet ecosystem. There will be a second model that is led by the Oxford Internet Institute, which will focus basically on internet policy issues. The third model will be project management and advocacy in order to give the fellows the tools in order to make their positions known and how they can run also projects related to it. We have engaged with the two companies that will support us on that, which is Pyramid Learning and ADN Up. And the final one, that is related to the internet way of doing, which is something that we will do jointly, I mean, both the Internet Society and the Internet Society Foundation, jointly with Deeplo and the Geneva Internet Platform. So these are the four basic models that we will be running this year. So to put it in a timeline, these four modules, the first, from week two and five, after the selection process, we will have the introduction to the internet ecosystem. From week six to nine, the internet way of thinking. Weeks ten to seventeen is going to be dedicated to project management and advocacy. And the final weeks, eighteen to twenty-four, are going to be on internet way of doing. Roughly, the way we approach this is very interactive. So the idea is that each month, this is a part-time fellowship for our fellows. So we are considering around twenty-four hours dedication a month for each of the fellows. That a typical month will comprise self-paced online classes, tutorials, discussion series, session, sorry. We are going to bring, get speakers, we are going to have this advocacy and planning sessions. There's going to be a mentor assigned to, for, to support them on project development. And there is also plans to have them to have meetups between the fellows. The selection process is about to start. It's going to be launched on March nineteenth. And so we will have, we would require your cooperation on spreading the word. Our community has the opportunity to participate in a two-step review process of the potential fellows. So we're going to have our application process, an initial review, a second review, and then the final selection of the fellows. We would like to ensure that the cohort is diverse, globally represented. And they would have to give us an introduction of the project that we'd like to work on. So we will have a trade of exciting independent projects. And we will also like to find synergy among the group because we think that the interaction between the fellows would be important for the success of this program. I'm going to share with you here and it's going to be available to you in the PowerPoint presentation that is going to be also shared, a video that we have produced in order to promote these fellowships. And I think it's very, very interesting. So you'll have time for watching the video later on. Well, I have presented on the partners, such as the Oxford Internet Institute and so on, that we have already secured for this program. But we are also in the middle of looking for sponsors for this fellowship program. So that's something we are focused on, as well as the academic bit. We would like to have an important contribution coming from our sponsors and the support of many organizations about the work. So we also see this as an opportunity to engage potential employers with potential employees. We would like our fellows to see this fellowship as an opportunity to improve their careers. So we would like to make that match through our partners and sponsors. Finally, I would like to give you an update on the other fellowship that we will be launching. As you know, we are going to be launching the Mid-Career Fellowship in 2022. And we are focusing on a different demographic here, people that is advancing in their career. And it's going to be a different experience for them. It's, as you remember, the Early Career one is a twenty-four weeks experience. This is going to be longer. We will have just one cohort annually. And we expect to begin the selection of fellows early in 2022. So keep in touch for news on the new fellowship launching in 2022. With that, I would like to thank you and I remain open to questions and comments. Thank you very much.
Hello. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, everyone, depending on where you are in the world. It's our pleasure to be able to present to you today. I'm James Wood, Head of Content Communications. And I'm joined by Christie Mason, Head of Marketing Communication. And together, we form the Content and Marketing Communication Team that was newly formed at the end of 2020 to encompass all of our communications function. So we wanted to take a moment just to look back at our reputation and focus on that for a moment. And we welcome the opportunity to have that topic, this topic discussed at board level. And as you know, in the wake of the proposed sale of PIR, our efforts were really geared towards two things. Firstly, repairing some of the immediate damage to our name around the sale itself. And secondly, then getting the Internet Society's reputation back on track in the longer term. We last checked in with you on those two things in about the August timeframe last year. And what you'll see now on these slides is a summary of how we fared by the time we reached the end of the year, as well as in what is more arguably important, as well as focusing on what we're doing now in 2021 to strengthen our reputation going forward. So it's fair to say that 2020 was full of obstacles. We tried to make the best out of what was a particularly difficult year from a communications perspective. Firstly, we were faced with the negative backlash around the sale itself that came to us from many directions, from our community, the wider internet community and from civil society in particular. But secondly, that was compounded by the inescapable reality of COVID, which forced us to pivot abruptly and to look for new opportunities in a different and unfamiliar landscape. So we worked hard to turn the negatives into positives. Hence the picture, we turned some lemons into lemonade. And there were actually some highlights. So we achieved quite a lot of significant media cut-through around our key topics in 2020. And in fact, 2020 was quite a standout year for that. We also set in motion some innovative initiatives which took on wider significance through their adoption, not just by different parts of the organization, but also within our community as well. And in what was quite a pivotal moment, we recognized the opportunity that we have to make some fundamental improvements to some aspects of our work for the longer term. So with that framing, I'm going to hand over to Christie.
Excellent. Thank you, James. So as James mentioned when we last met, we presented you with the strategy that we were working towards, which was really to neutralize the debate that was happening while building our reputation for the long term. And so to do this, we focused on sentiment across earned media and social media. And we did this in these two channels, because this is particularly where most of the discourse was happening. So from a landscape perspective, again, when we last met, here's what you can see we were looking at from earned media. And there was certainly a lot of coverage around the sale. And while the backlash in the media did feel very destructive at the time, in actuality, and looking at the numbers and looking at the sentiment, it was mostly neutral. However, the positivity sentiment was negligible. And we'll talk about that a little bit more in the upcoming slides. From a social media channel, neutralizing the debate on social really proved to be our biggest challenge. As you can see here, the negativity sentiment very much outweighed neutral and positivity. And this was really due in large part for two reasons. One was the Save.org campaign that was waged on social media by the Comparators. They, this is a platform that they know well and they used it very well. And then the other added challenge we had was the reliance on key points about.org. While key points about.org had a digital presence in terms of a website, it did lack a social presence. And this was something that did hurt us on the social side. So amongst what felt like a tidal wave of negativity around the sale, we did really try to stay above the fray. Andrew was very steadfast in his direction to stay focused on our mission. And so from a corporate comms perspective, we just stayed the course and we let the haters hate, if you will. And while we continued to do what we do best, which is talk about how we grow and strengthen the Internet. We also really tried to underscore our mission. And so doing this showcased the outcomes of our work and cast a light on the people that make up the Internet Society at large and also cast a really positive light on the Internet as a resource for opportunity. And so, as we talked about, the global pandemic, while very unfortunate, it did provide us as Internet Society to talk, with a platform to talk about the Internet and only a way as internet society to talk with a platform to talk about the internet in only a way that we could. So ironically, it was an opportunity for us as public opinion, which has shifted from the internet being a critical resource in daily life during the pandemic, as everything switched to, you know, digital communication. So this enabled us to elevate ourselves from the narrative of the sellers of.org to really a trusted voice on growing and strengthening the internet. So to reset the misperceptions of of who we are and what we do and to enable a better understanding about us, we really focused our media relations on the internet as a resource for opportunity and the critical need to grow and strengthen it. So a bit of a reverse engineering, if you will, as a way to talk about our projects and our work. So to accomplish this, we pitched many stories to media across the world about our project work, and we offered many ISOC spokespeople to talk about trending topics that were related to our work and our mission. We have state, we issued many statements last year that were deliberately bold and clear so you could see what side we stood and did not stand for. As James previously highlighted, when we last met, the El Cui piece on our CN, on the CN Development, which was featured in La Machián, was one of, which is one of Argentina's largest newspapers. This is a great illustrative example of how communications not only helps tell a story, but strategically contributes to our projects and our outcomes. And then, you know, another thing that we did want to highlight was a public poll survey that we commissioned last year to put data points on two critical messages that we talk about. One being the lack of awareness around the digital divide and the other being that the internet is a resource for socio economical stability and growth. And then to reset the perceptions and enable a better understanding about us from a social media perspective, we really want to showcase our united effectiveness to build and promote and defend a bigger and stronger internet. So tactically, to do this, we created two social narratives that really led with what we call heart and soul. And so this first one you see here, I heard the internets, I heard the internet was really focused on the internet being a hero in 2020. Obviously, there are many heroes that rose to the challenge of 2020, from the frontline doctors and nurses to educators. But the internet also rose to the challenge of the pandemic and its own right. And so I heard the internet was a digital narrative that we started to showcase the ways that the internet has helped communities and individuals. The global sentiment of appreciation for the internet in the face of the pandemic gave us this opportunity. And so we we took this grabbing narrative and we were able to wrap some content around it, some social pieces around it. And but beyond that, it was adopted by our community engagement team as the basis and the foundation for Chapterathon 2020. The other one that you see on the right, which is We Are the Internet Society, was really a rally cry. And this was an attempt to reclaim our narrative and reshape public perception. And so the internet, We Are the Internet Society puts real faces of our global community front and center, as you can see here. And it makes it all about the people and the work they are doing. It's a very simple narrative, starting with who are we? These campaigns are still very much relevant today and they're still alive today. So closing out 2020, while PIR did dominate media attention in Q1 and Q2, we were able to gain high profile, top tier attention towards the back half of the year and that really focused on our work. And, you know, we had some wins in social too, in particular, our social media following grew. So looking over at the our media side of the house, we close out the year with 78% neutral sentiment and an increase in positivity sentiment sentiment to 13%. And that was a 12% delta that we grew. So it was very good. Now, the rejection of the proposed sale did have an impact, as you can see, by the 9% negative sentiment, which was about up from 1.3%, but by comparison from a delta perspective, the positivity sentiment well outweighed the negativity. And so we also look beyond sentiment to see what else was 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 strong indicators for reputation. And there were two things that rose to the top, one being our headlines and feature mentions coming out of the air. We had, as you can see here, well over 1,400 media and our feature and headline mentions, which was about 183% above what we targeted in the beginning of the year. And then from inbound media inquiries, we had 53 over the course of the year. And this is a really big deal when you start looking at the number of inbounds and who they're coming from. In particular, these were from, a lot of these were from tier one media outlets, as you can see here. And then from a social perspective, we close out 2020, we close out 2020 with around 45% neutral sentiment, which was up from 39%. And our positivity sentiment grew from five to 45, and our negativity sentiment decreased drastically from 57 to 10%. Now, beyond this, we, you know, as we talked about, as I talked about earlier, one of a strong, a strong indicator also was our follower growth. And our follower growth across our global social channels grew over 16%. This is a big deal. And what we saw was really a lot of growth on LinkedIn and followed by Instagram. These are our two big growth channels. So with that, we feel really confident that we were able to neutralize the debate, the strategy that we put forth, we accomplished, we fared good. And while it didn't seem easy and the odds many times seemed stacked against us, the numbers are telling us a much different story. They're telling us that we were effective. But beyond this, we learned a lot as an organization and also as a communications team. We learned that to, I guess, never underestimate a small group of committed citizens, and we need to really take crisis scenario planning to heart. From a brand and reputation perspective, I think the org now understands that brand and reputation is much bigger than the functional area of communications and that it really encircles every facet of the organization. And lastly, civil society is just not clear about ISOC's mission and the value of our work, isn't as clear as it really could be. So armed with that, we turned our attention to this year with a focus on being more effective in our communications. And so with that, I'll turn it over to James.
Thanks, Christie. Yes, so which brings us really quite neatly on to content as our, as one of the things that we're really focusing on today. Because content, better content can help make us more efficient and more effective in our work. As I outlined in November, we've recognized content as one of our strategic assets, our greatest strategic assets and a determining factor in what we are able to do and and our success. So building content really helps us build stronger, more robust relationships. It helps us forge stronger bonds with our community, and it plays a really important role in achieving the positive outcomes, such as the El Cui story that Christie mentioned for, that we want for the internet. So all of those things together, relationships, outcomes for the internet, connecting with our community, where content plays a role, in fact, then ladders up to our reputation. Through all of those things, we create what we hope is a positive and a strong reputation. But content sits at the heart of that. So we shouldn't underestimate the the association and the strength of association between good content and a good reputation. So the fundamentals that we've now begun to put in place to be able to do content well are something of an investment today for dividends over time. And we've moved on quite significantly with that. Some of the building blocks are taking shape. And we've, we've done quite a lot of work to begin to turn the organization into one that thinks about content harder and does content better. Here is an example of one of those fundamental building blocks. This is essentially our vision for content encapsulated in a very straightforward, simple sentence, but which really provides us with a compass point and a reference for the content that we should be producing. It's encapsulating what our content needs to do for us. And beyond this, the implementation plan that we have for our content will help us align all of our content with our objectives and our goals. It will help ensure that we're creating content with our audiences in mind so that we stay relevant. It will help us to organize and structure the content in ways that people want to consume it so that we're taking not just our internal view of how things should be shared, but and we're informed by the way in which people want to want to read it. And we'll, we'll be able to direct our energies into doing less, but doing it better. We think our content implementation plan will make us more agile and it will certainly increase our internal efficiencies so that we can direct our own resources to maximum effect. More tactically, as part of this content implementation effort, right now, we're working on some very practical components and to bring our content vision to life. First amongst those is a content toolkit that really will be a central reference point and a pillar reference for anyone who is producing content for the internet society. So this toolkit will contain our content fundamentals, which will ground us in our content strategy. And the the content vision statement that you saw on the previous slide is a good example of of one of those fundamentals. It will provide, it will also offer and contain a complete governance framework for content, including our standards, our principles and our and the criteria by which we will create content. It will include guidance on aligning with our brand and on following our our style. And indeed, our writing style is being worked on at this very moment. And it will provide clarity on the processes that we use to plan, create and distribute content, as well as containing some other information on training and things to help people employ the the resources in the toolkit. So the net result of all of that is that we will achieve much greater clarity, unity, and above all, consistency in the content that we produce and therefore in how we are seen as an organization and a community. So there's the link between content and reputation. And this will scale over time too, because this toolkit won't just be for staff use, it will also be for others who work with us to produce any kind of content, whether that is designed content or perhaps freelance writers who are writing on our behalf. And the result again will be consistency, unity and clarity of message. And that will scale further when we're able to bring that to our community for for them to use and for them to use the appropriate pieces. And some of the changes that we've already made to our content are already being noticed. And we're getting some positive feedback about some of the things we're doing. This particular quote comes to us in reference to the Global Update, which is our newsletter for individual members. And that piece of communication has been refreshed and reworked so that it is now built for purpose with individual members in mind, most specifically. And it's personal, speaks to our members as people rather than an entity as part of our community. It's short and concise, it's regular, it focuses on relevant information, and above all, it doesn't try to do too much all at once. And we'll be paying particular attention to some of our other content outputs that our community facing in the rest, in the throughout the course of the rest of the year. But we won't stop there. We know we need to do more. We know we need to fix some of our existing content to bring it in line with our guidance and with the things that we're currently creating. And we know that we need to create a new content narrative to properly explain who we are and to cement our reputation over time. We hope that you'll begin to see some of the other changes that we bring through content and that you'll recognize some of the ways in which content is contributing to our longer term reputation. And we very much look forward to answering questions in at the meeting in about a week's time. And we'll be very pleased to have a conversation with you then. So thank you very much for listening from both of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're recording now.
Okay. Okay. So welcome, everyone, to the 157th meeting of the Internet Society Board of Trustees. We are still having online meetings. So we didn't travel to Mexico this time. First of all, on the agenda, we have the welcome apologies and declaration of conflict. So we are still missing a few trustees. But they will be on and off. I see Mike just joined. My Muna hasn't joined yet. And then George will be on and off as well. Pepper will join in half an hour. So so we will reflect that in the in the minutes of the meeting. So given the agenda that you all have received, do you have any declaration of conflict? Anyone? Okay, here in none, let's proceed with the agenda. So the the first agenda topic is always a nice one, which is welcoming new chapters. And this time we are welcoming the the new chapters of Gabon and India Hyderabad. So it's always great to see the the family growing. And as usual, we're gonna pass this resolution by acclamation. But first, I need someone to move. Richard moves, Walid seconds. Okay, and this time I will give you precise instructions. Now you unmute before we pass the resolution by acclamation. And now we pass the resolution by acclamation. This time we did it much better, you know. Getting there. Okay, excellent. But jokes aside, it's really great to see new chapters joining. So and and you got all the all the documents in the in your in your board book, so you saw all the documentation and everything. Moving on to Agenda Point Number Three, which is the 2020 Year End Achievement Report. As as just for the record and for all the audience or for anyone watching the recordings later, this time we are using the same structure as we did last time, which is that we receive pre recordings from from staff on most topics, actually. So the trustees, they have already watched them. And we had had some preliminary discussions by email. So this session is basically the Q and A, so to give trustees possibilities to to continue asking. So having said that, this is the 2020 Year End Achievement Report. And, you know, I open the floor to any trustees with questions. Oh, Pepper, welcome, Pepper. Okay, so I was, so Pepper, we are in, that's Agenda Point Number Three, and I'm opening the floor for for Q and A at this point.
Yeah, apologize for being late. I was having problems with the link, so Kevin resent it.
Yeah, I was also having problems. So no, no problem at all. I don't know what happened today. Okay, yeah, we we had some some conversations by email. So it was, you know, thanks, everyone, for for basically, you know, the quick responses and the interesting discussions. And, you know, sometimes I was also trying to play devil's advocate to to basically get the discussions going, because I think it's good to, you know, sometimes step back and look at what we are doing for maximum impact. So so if I was, you know, commenting on your on your video, don't don't take it as I was criticizing anything. It's just to to make us basically step back and and look at things from a different perspective. I would like to avoid group think at all costs. So so if that's what it takes, it's it's good to have some discussions. So I see Richard was tentatively joining the the queue, but then he left. Any questions? I think, I mean, all my questions basically were addressed by by email. So so that's why I was I was happy. And as I said, they they basically were about, you know, how we are basically achieving impact and how we are maximizing that. And I, you know, mostly to to avoid, because I mean, I understand that it feels good to to preach to the choir. So to preach to the, you know, basically usual suspects. But sometimes it's good to, as I said, step back and think whether there's audiences out there that we could be addressing instead or in addition to and all that. So so I think that was a good exercise, useful at least for me. Richard and then George.
Sure. Yeah. So thanks for the presentations, everyone. I it was a really helpful way for me to learn about what has been, what's been going on. In particular, I was really impressed by the adaptability that all the teams showed in overcoming the challenges they faced in this year and, you know, meeting and exceeding their their goals for the year. I was wondering if folks had thoughts about kind of what aspects of that, the kind of adaptation, the adapted way of working, we would imagine carrying forward into the kind of post-COVID world, assuming we're headed in that direction.
I don't know the protocol. Do we just jump in?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay, so not speaking for my counterpart Jane on the project side, but trying to invoke her. So one of the things that I think was really helpful is is looking at targets and then reevaluating them. Like, we did this explicit thing in the middle of last year where we did what we call a refresh, which was like, OMG, this year looks a lot different than we thought it was gonna look like. What do we need to do to actually make progress on the What do we need to do to actually make progress on these these areas? And in some places, do we even need to reevaluate things that we had thought we could do? And so that that sort of periodic sort of global check, you know, we did it sort of near the midpoint of last year. That that felt like something that those of us who spend our time in the clouds could could be doing and bring back to at least the project side. I can't speak to the initiative stuff. But at least on the project side, doing that seemed to be really helpful and seemed to, just like we do the the midyear reforecast on the finance side. It really helped to make sure that the targets were, the things we planned on doing, the goals we had were within sort of to use a physics term, the light cone of possibility, right? We actually sort of figured out, hey, can we do this kind of stuff like F BIF? We're not going to have the typical wonderful glorious face to face interaction. That seemed really important, I would say, in the project side.
Thank you, Joe. Any other answers to Richard before we move on?
I just want to say I'm going to steal the light cone of interaction.
Okay, Mike.
Definitely like that. I'm going to find a use for it.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
There is one more thing that I would say about this, though, and that is one of the things that you've noticed in the way we've been trying to assess things is to, is is a greater emphasis on on impact effects and the and the goals that we're we're having. So so part of the answer here is that the details of how something is achieved become less less important, the more successful we are at building ourselves around around those goals. And what that fundamentally should mean is that is is that, you know, the the reforecasting of the details of the project is something that the board probably doesn't need to care about quite as much as it needs to care about. You know, did we achieve these things and so on? And so that's why you you see this emphasis we've got on the impact and so on. Because, you know, the 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 measure of whether we're doing what we need to do is not, did we do what we said we were going to do in the sense of like, you know, did we show up at this meeting and, you know, make so many comments at the microphone or whatever? But rather, did we cause people to embrace the internet in the way that was necessary? And if if what that means is, you know, on on day five of the plan, we learn that our plans were wrong because, oh, I don't know, you know, COVID intervened, but the UN couldn't respond fast enough. So the ITU meeting is moved to another year. You know, we have to be flexible enough to achieve those things. And yet we still have the same goal, which is to make sure that the internet is for everyone and so on. So I I that's the sort of second piece of this, that, you know, we're constantly reviewing. We want constantly to be reviewing the details of how we're doing these things. But I think the high level objectives probably don't change very much.
Yeah, exactly. No, and we appreciate the agility or, well, nowadays agility coming anything, the flexibility in in basically keeping the spirit of the goals while while achieving the impact. So so that was great, I think. I think Rinalia was wanting to talk to this point, right? Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Gonzalo. Just a point to say that with COVID, we all switched to the virtual mode of engagement. And I think most people would expect that once the pandemic goes away, we would go back to the old way of doing things, which is more face to face onsite. But I think what we've learned from virtual engagement is that we are able to achieve a broader audience. And Joyce tells me also in meetings at regional levels, et cetera, we see more women, which we don't normally would see as many on face to face encounters. And so I think that what we want to do in moving forward is do the hybrid approach if we can and leverage as best as we can on virtual engagement while maximizing on the opportunity for face to face when that opportunity comes about. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot of discussions about that on on at the SDO level. And many people are are basically discussing on how to make this hybrid environment fair to everyone. So that, you know, everyone has the same chances to to be effective. So so, you know, starting thinking of that and I, you know, just coming up with a structure that works for everyone, I think that would be quite useful, actually. As you know, different organizations, they use different things like, you know, the I T F that they just had the 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 meeting last week. They use these, you know, small, low, low fidelity avatars, which I think they they actually serve a purpose. At least I like them. So so, yeah, I mean, just just coming up with with ideas for that is good. And and I I think basically the the face to face interactions are mostly important at the beginning of a project. Then actually, it's usually easy to work offline as well. So, yeah. Okay, good. So George was in the queue for a while. So George, please.
Thank you. I take Rinalia's point and I support it. I wish that we saw more of our members listening in on this conversation, which is on Zoom and available to them. One for, let me start with Joe. Joe, with regard to open web standards, how is the coordination occurring between us and W3C and any other organization that is that is likely to be involved in this? Are we stepping on each other's toes? Are we leaving a void in between? Are we are we a happy family, et cetera? And the second point, let me give you this now. Manras, with respect to Manras, what is our ultimate goal? I mean, can we foresee a possible future in which networks will be refused?
You just muted yourself, George.
Oh, sorry.
The last the last five seconds only.
Can we foresee a future in in which Manras will become obligatory from from a from a norm point of view rather than a legal point of view and connecting to the internet? And how how close, what kind of contribution are we making to that? Or is strong, weak, long term, short term, whatever, how fit our activity into that? Thank you.
Wonderful. So go with the first question first here. The open standards work that we, I mean, the open standards everywhere work that we did in 2020 was specifically as a consumer of web standards and web protocols and putting together a set of servers that would use all of the most modern, awesomest standards that we had available. And it's not just web standards, there are also other standards built into that, obviously. And so I would say it's mostly as a consumer, we're definitely like, for example, this year we have a maintenance activity, which is we know that for in the web ecosystem in general, that Quick is going to hit the streets. This is a new super fast, secure transport protocol. And so we knew that was coming in and we decided, well, we know next year we want to build that piece into the work we've already done. And so that's a bit of the maintenance that we're doing this year. But I don't see it as stepping on toes or anything. You could imagine a type of project like that that tried to prototype more earlier kinds of standards and worked on that. I'm not sure that's exactly our sweet spot. There's a bunch of other people with like actual product ideas and like, you know, that have just a totally different approach to working on those kinds of things. But by all means, using them and making sure people out there can very easily follow our recipe to stand up a web server that, you know, either hosted or or bear Nginx or Apache, two different types of web servers. Making sure that they can set those up easily and then run all the modern protocol suites. That is mission accomplished for us right there. On the manners side, manners is, I love it so much. You know, if you don't, if you're a security person, you you, these collective action problems like manners are just blow your mind, right? Because like, you have to get humans to care about something that they don't tend to care about unless they're big nerds like me, right? Or Richard or a bunch of other people on this call. And so in this case, you know, you can see it's almost, it's it's a story of exponential growth. You know, we started off where people were like, who the hell is this? What are you doing? Excuse my language. And now, this past year, we've seen AWS, Google Cloud, you know, huge players in the market actually say, not only are we going to do these things, we're going to go a step further and do some of the cloud parts of of the manners program. So in terms of growth, we're seeing big people, we're seeing more people do it, we're seeing big people do it. We're still sort of, if you count how many ASNs, how many networks out there comport to the to the manners actions? It's 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 not, it's not, it's not a gigantic number. It's it's, you know, I think, how many ASNs are there? I can't remember how many ASNs are, but we right now we have something like 600 participants. And that's that's not a huge fraction of the total set of networks out there. And some of these things aren't necessarily networks. But in in terms of when will it sort of hit that tipping point? We often see in these collective collective action problems in security. It's unclear when it's going to sort of be table stakes, which is sort of why I'm really excited about 2021. And by table stakes, I mean, it's unclear when it's going to be surprising that you wouldn't support all these actions. The what we've seen with the big players going gung ho is that more and more and more likely, it's going to be harder to to use something that will not comport to these actions. But I guess what I would say is that in 2021, this year, one of the big pushes, as you can see, if you look at the Action Plan 2021, is actually make a determination of under what conditions can we sort of let this go and and do its own thing and be part of the community with its own structure. And I think part of that discussion is going to be, you know, actually thinking really hard about at what point is this sort of like HTTPS? You know, I think that's a really interesting model. It's now now browsers, for example, mark things as not secure rather than being secure. Because when it comes down to it, you know, most of the flows you're going to have in a web browser are going to be secured via HTTPS. And and I'm looking for things like that. You know, we don't have browsers for routing security necessarily. We don't have things that that have the same leverage that we have in the HTTPS environment. So I I don't know when it's going to happen. It feels like we have an amazing trajectory for getting to a point where this is just how you operate your networks. But it's a little harder to say that when, if everything were to stop, it would just sort of sustain on its own, if that makes sense. Sorry to be so long winded, George.
Thank you.
Andrew wanted to talk about this as well.
There's just a little follow up that I would make to what to what Joe said. When when we were looking at manners and whether it was a viable project a couple of years ago, one of the things we identified as a gap in it was the observatory, which is why we put a lot of a lot of shoulder behind that to make sure that it got deployed and that it got scalable and that it it continues to operate. You know, that people can depend upon it. The observatory is fundamentally a mechanism by which banners members can improve their routing filter policies by saying, here is somebody who, here is a network that is likely to leak because there's a long history of leaking with this network. And so if I get things that I'm wondering, is this a bogus announcement or not? One of the things I'm going to do for my network is is factor that into my into my operations. And it is true that what this will do, just as, for instance, DNSSEC did for for DNS. When people started using DNSSEC, it moved DNS from being a highly permissive technology that tended to encourage connections and tended to permit things and intended to, you know, patch things over for you. So it would DNS, DNS raw, old, old style DNS, for instance, frequently would use glue that was totally illegitimate in order to make things work. If it, you know, if it got an answer that way. And that was something that that happened. And the problem was, you know, people would exploit those holes by injecting stuff that way. And that was how we had a lot of security compromises. And so what will happen as manners is successful is that there will be networks that find found they used to work fine and things that, you know, used to work fine for them and everything. And and suddenly stuff doesn't anymore. Practices that they've been using for years suddenly become problematic and and they have failures where they didn't used to. And and we need to be prepared for that because that is a goal. That is, that is one of the things we are trying to do is to make practices like that 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 are dangerous tend to fail rather than tend to work. And it means that some connectivity is going to be interrupted under those circumstances. The the this is, this is the place where availability and and trustworthiness, you know, sort of come up against each other. And the and the issue here is that we need the internet to be trustworthy as well. And so that's a big part of what this is. And being trustworthy sometimes entails that stuff that otherwise might work suddenly doesn't because, you know, people need to be able to be sure that what you're doing is correct. And so I I think that that's an important thing, an important thing to recognize. Of course, if we didn't have this history of people abusing route leaks for totally nasty reasons, none of this would be valuable. But that's like saying, you know, everything is fine in your town of 50 people. So why doesn't that work in New York City or in Hong Kong or whatever? And the reason is, well, you know, you could know everybody in your town of 50 people. You can't know everybody in in a large metropolis, so you have to, you have to have different sets of rules.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, that's good. Let's go with the last question on on this agenda point and Walid, please.
Oh, yes, I thank you very much. I was really impressed of the work, especially the the achieved compared to what's expected. One thing I wanted to ask about is about the community engagement. And I can tell there's been tremendous progress there despite the pandemic. How was the community engagement in non English speaking communities? I mean, what was the medium, means of communication? Was there media coverage? Was there interaction? Was there more of a global perspective shown in terms of branding process?
Branding, that's you, Kristy.
So I think that's one part of the question, but I guess engagement is a big part of it, too. So I'm going to turn, I hate to point this, but I want to point it over to you, Joyce.
I was, I was looking for the unmute while you while you were speaking. Well, generally speaking, the we actually made quite a lot of progress, generally speaking, in terms of multilingual outreach. We are now using interpretation for most of our community facing meetings, French and Spanish. And obviously, having our dedicated staff for the Middle East, I know that I I see lots of communication happening in Arabic as well. So there's generally within the community and within the community engagement efforts, we are really making a a constant effort to make sure that we we address the multilingual approach. We generally also send out our messages translated, all the surveys are translated. Most, so the most of the language is mostly French and Spanish. And so only when it's specifically regional to the Middle East, we would actually do it in Arabic if if and when necessary. But that's, that's what we've done so far. And so since everything was online, it's slightly easier to to do that and to do it for face to face meetings as well. So.
Thank you. Honestly, I was quite impressed by the Arabic message I got today. So well done.
Well, I wanted to add one thing which touches on the approach that projects are taking. Every single project is basically asked to identify their target audience. And depending on where their audiences are and what languages they speak, that is the communication that is being sent out in the languages that is local to them. So that is the approach that we're taking. And I think the media response that you see in terms of the results from last year speaks to the impact that we are achieving.
Thank you very much. Well done.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, at some point I got messages from ISOC in in Spanish, actually, for some reason. So that was weird. Anyway, I saw George was unmuting himself because he hates the term branding, but then he didn't intervene. So George, do you want to some closing words before we move on?
I did have one more quick question for for Jane. Jane, you noted in your in your presentation that one of the things you're 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 doing is telling people why shutdowns are not a good thing. All right, that's an article of faith with us. How are you doing it? How strongly and with what effect, if any?
So I don't think Jane is on the call.
I don't, I don't see her, but I I think I think there's a really important piece of this that that I want to grab hold of. I it it, so to what effect? First of all, the answer is, well, like, it's not great, right? You look at the numbers and they just keep going up and to the right. The number of shutdowns and the sophistication of those shutdowns is worse all the time. A central piece of our message, however, is 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 really fundamentally how self harming this is, how 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 much damage this does to the people who are who are undertaking it. And we're focused on on the ways in which it's bad for for you in your in your region. Now, this is sometimes controversial because people say, oh, you don't care about the human rights of people in places of shutdowns and so on. And that isn't the the stance that we are taking. The the stance that we have been taking is, you know, human rights are The, the stance that we have been taking is, you know, human rights are important, but the internet society is not an expert on human rights and we're not a government. So we're not really in a position to make those trade off decisions because you know, fundamentally, I mean, every government that does a shutdown, for instance, says that it is because of, of its responsibility to protect its population from various attacks and so on. And we respect governments' rights to do that. That is fundamentally what governments are for. But our central message is that this is extraordinarily bad for the governments that are doing it because the, the, the internet is the, is this means of communication that provides the ability of societies to build themselves up and so on. And, and every time you do a shutdown, you reduce confidence in the, in the networks that you're connected to. The fact that you can do shutdowns is a sign that the infrastructure is more fragile than a really robust network would be. And so what we are trying to do is, is take the message, look, we understand that there are political and social concerns that you have and so on. That is not our remit. That's not the place where we are most able to, to contribute to this conversation. But you are doing harm to the viability of your network over the long term because people are going to avoid your network. If you keep, if you keep doing this. And so that's the really fundamentally one of the things that we're trying to do. And you can see this in pulse dot internet society.org as, as Joe pointed out. This is something that shows up in the, in the numbers there. This is visible to everybody in the world. And so just like what I was saying before with manners, where people are gradually going to make decisions to avoid networks that are leaking all of the time because they don't want garbage traffic from that, they're also going to avoid locating themselves and their services inside networks that are up and down and unreliable in those ways. Because why would I put my services in your network if you're going to turn it off? I can't maintain my stuff. So I'm going to put it in somebody else's network. And we are starting to see network operators in certain countries respond to this message and recognize, oh, this is a real problem. We had actually a fairly heated discussion at the microphone at AFPIF a year or two ago on, on this very topic, because there were some people who were mad that their networks were not being used. And the answer was, well, you keep turning them off. Why would I put anything there? So that's, that's a, a, a message that we're trying to carry across.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, this was a nice conversation. We are five minutes behind. I see Ted has a question that you, if you are very quickly, I mean, very quick, please.
I'll take it off.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I saw several questions that, you know, some people wanted to talk to other people. If you can take that offline, that, that'd be perfect, not to delay the agenda so much. Thank you. And I'm sorry, Ted. I'm welcome, by the way. And next, next topic on the agenda is the, is number four, I believe. Yeah, agenda point number four is the early career fellowship program update. And, and that was very useful also to, to receive all the information. My, my only comment, I already discussed with, with Sebastian is that, you know, it would be basically a good idea to, in addition to the chapters and, and six, to involve also the org members, both because they can set requirements and because, you know, I mean, it's, it's nice to, to involve them. That was also one of our goals this year. So this, this seems like the perfect opportunity to do so. And Sebastian and I were exchanging already a few emails. So I think we have a plan going forward. But with that, I, I open the floor to other comments or questions to Sebastian.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just.
Paper, please.
Yeah, thank you. I thought this was actually a real move forward. We talked about it at a conceptual level, we'd approved it. But this made it actually quite concrete. And I thought that both of the proposals, you know, both of the, the plan, the execution, you know, the, the plan for 21 and then, you know, the mid level for next year. I think this is that I was, I was very frankly, very impressed with both the, the structure. The, you know, the, making it very concrete and also doing, getting this done in a very timely fashion. So you know, now the question is recruiting, right? And that's going to be, so I appreciate, I was going to mention adding the OMAC members. And I think that that also will help in the recruiting. And frankly, it's one of the things that also built on the last discussion, the serendipity of the pandemic with everything moving online, actually is, is making it easier to do these things. And people are becoming much more used to it. So I just want to thank everybody for putting this together.
Absolutely. And, and when we have the first cohort, we will be able also to, to learn and, and basically know pivot and, and, you know, continue things that work and change things that don't. So, yeah. John.
Can you hear me? It's a new headset.
We, we can, we can.
Okay, thank you. It looks like the first cohort is supposed to start in 90 days. I'm just wondering, have you started recruiting or is it, or are you, we, we waited, waited to show this to us or where, where are you in that process?
It's the call for nominations is going to be launched next week. So we will start the recruiting process on that. Until then, we are having webinars with our, our community and, and different stakeholders, not introducing program. But the, the actual call for nominations, it's due next week.
Okay, thank you.
George, please.
Thank you. I like the presentation. A question for Sebastian. What is the marginal cost of adding a 16th student? Since everything is virtual, it looks like most of your costs are fixed costs and you could either either expand or contract the program quite easily without, without any financial, any additional financial contribution.
Yeah, but it's not a decision of a small cohort. It's not a decision based on the economics of it. It's based on the pedagogy that is applied to it. So the recommendation that, that we, we got is to keep it small in the case of the of the early career. Actually, the, the mid-career is kind to be smaller in the cohort size. But what we are going to do with the, with the early career one is to keep it also short, is, is five months program. So we will, once we launch it, we will have two cohorts a year. That would accommodate more, more, more students. It's it, it, it's, it's, it's planning is an experience and we need to have personal experience with the, with the fellows. And that's why we, we're keeping the cohort in a small size.
Yeah, but what's the, what's the answer to the question?
That.
Why you're doing what you're doing, but I'm curious about the financial implications of, of the marginal person.
Yeah, they, they, it wouldn't be that, that high. Yeah, the, the cost of adding an extra, an extra fellow.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any, any more questions. I'm not missing anything. Okay. But thanks a lot. I mean, you, you got good feedback both here and by email. So I think, you know, just take it forward. Please let us know when this goes live so that we can promote it and support it and, you know, letting, you know, potential candidates know and all that. And we take it from there and keep us updated on the mid-career program as well, of course.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much for, for this opportunity. And I would like to, to emphasize the, the role of Constance Bomiler and Alejandro Pietro, who's actually leading this, this activity because they're, they're doing a terrific job on, on this. And I wanted to pass the message to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sebastian. Okay, so we are moving to the next topic, which is agenda topic number five, which is building our reputation. And we have James and, and Kelsey here. So I, I already kind of commented a couple of things on, on the, on the strategy. I think it, it sounds great. So with, with that, I would like to open the floor. If other trustees have questions as well. While, while people come up with questions, I would like to ask you, how, how is it working the, the structure that James was describing the other day that, you know, you guys are dealing with different things? So if you can share a few words about that, that would be useful, I guess, so that trustees understand, you know, who is doing what, that may be confusing other ways.
Yeah, thank you, Gonzalo. Hi, everyone. So at the end of last year, Q4, because of the fact that we are taking a new approach with content and content is going to become much more of a strategic focus for us. We saw value in reshaping the corporate communications function, the internet society. So now we have effectively two teams that work very, very closely together. We have the content team that I look after and we have the marketing communication team that Christie looks after. So really we work in tandem and, you know, it together in terms of thinking about the content that we need as an organization that is going to help us most to get us to our objectives. And then how we then market ourselves through that content. So we've sort of decoupled the, the, the two functions, if you like, except they work very closely, we work very closely together. And they're really in tandem with each other most of the time.
Thank you, James. That, that's useful. I mean, I, I was aware of, of the display, but I, I think it's good for trustees to, to understand that. So, so let me get into the queue. Heather, please.
Yeah, so I was curious, especially as content is a core strategy focus. The, how you're treating different audiences or at least thinking about them. And I think I, I was wondering about that largely because you had mentioned in the video that LinkedIn and Instagram are our top platforms, which I find massively interesting because I think of them incredibly differently.
So I can take the, the first part or the second part to your question. Yeah, LinkedIn and Instagram are, are growth channels, meaning we're seeing the most people like, like our content or become part of a, become part of the group there. And I think for a couple, there's a couple of reasons that I think one is we've put a lot of effort into Instagram because there's a a younger population there that we've been really trying to cultivate through much more video work that we're posting and also some work that we're posting on for images. Cause that's what Instagram is about. So that's why we're seeing the growth there. There was before I joined, Instagram had kind of gone, our Instagram channel had gone dark, meaning we weren't posting much. So that's also posting on a regular basis is boosting our algorithm, which is then gaining us more followers. From a LinkedIn perspective, one of the things that I could point to at least this year in a COVID year has been just a, our, people are now looking at the internet as a resource for good. And so I think that there is a re now renewed positivity for the internet. And so I think that that has also helped our growth numbers on that channel in particular. Twitter tends to be a channel that if there's going to be any negative rhetoric, it's going to be on Twitter.
Great, thank you. I'm also a little bit curious about the different needs of audiences, but I don't know whether you guys have dug into that in the same way. But that answers my question there a little bit on needs of audience, but.
James, I don't know if you want to talk through content?
Yeah, just in terms of audiences. So audience, being audience led and having audience considerations at the heart of how we think about content is really, you know, central to our content approach now. It's really at the, at the center of our, our content strategy. And we want to make sure that we're delivering content that is relevant to people and that obviously then aligns with our strategic focus. So it's about finding the sweet spots for people. And then as Christie explains, using the best and most appropriate channels to reach those people. So it really is a marriage between the relevance of the content in order to achieve what we want to achieve and the use of the channels. Which is why Markham and content have to work in collaboration. So I don't know.
I think that does help. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next in the queue is Richard.
Thanks. Thanks. I thought the summary statistics about positive, neutral, negative sentiments in, in the media was a useful comparison, the way you did it, provided before and after. One thing I noted in the earned media statistics though, while positive sentiment was, was up quite a bit, negative sentiment was also up. And, you know, the, the fraction of positive and negative grew as well. So I wonder if you had, had thoughts on kind of why, what was driving that? Or if it was just more people having an opinion at all about ISOC or if there was some concrete driver there?
So one was, we can attribute when the sale was declined, we can attribute to that, that grew up negative sentiment. The other negative sentiment that there was a lot of, there were some shutdowns that happened on the end of last year across the globe. And the way the algorithm works is even though we might be talking about internet shutdowns in a positive light, the algorithm still sees it as negative because of the word shutdown. So you have, so that the sentiment is not an exact science because the way it works, there's sort of that plus or minus. But nevertheless, I would attribute one of the biggest slices to go towards, or it was because of the, the rejection of the sale.
Thank you. George, please.
Thanks, Gonzalo. This is an excellent presentation and it builds on the excellent presentation that you gave the last time. You're asking for feedback in, in various ways, in your various newsletters and the like. How much are you getting? It would seem to me that one indication of health is that members and others, people get involved in giving you feedback and asking you for perhaps even more than you can deliver. That would be a particularly nice position to be in, I think, at this point. What are you getting? And how, how do you measure it? How do you regard it?
That's a very valid observation. Thank you, George. So I don't have the exact numbers in terms of the feedback we're getting or the amount that we're getting, but I do know that we are getting much more input and feedback from people than we've ever had. So that has to be some kind of indication that what we're doing differently is being noticed. And you know, generally speaking, the feedback we're getting is also positive. So again, that's a, that's a good indication that we're moving in the right direction. And, you know, we do want to be able to measure the levels of satisfaction within and beyond our community about the things that we, we send out. And this is a good start. But from what we're seeing, A, it's more feedback than we've ever had and B, it's positive.
Yeah, if you, if qualitative presentation, that would really be, it would really help me understand the quality and the nature of it. Thank you.
Thanks.
But Joyce wants to say something. Joyce?
Thank you for the question, George, first of all. The, the one thing to note on, to complement on what James just said is that we used to get a couple of thank yous based as replies to the newsletters. We actually, in the last two ones, are receiving actual nominations and recommendations for stories about members. And I, while, while James was talking, I quickly pinged Leah to see if she had a number to share. And so the, we had about 40. I, I can share the, the exact numbers, but about 40 responses in the last one. And about 20 on average so far. So since we changed the tone and we changed it to more personable and it's more directed to members about one topic. So that's since January, mid-January.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you. And, and let me remind all trustees that this was one of the focus areas for the board. And that's why we are basically following up with that. And, and this is actually something we, we consider to be very important in the last AGM. And any other questions? Okay, great. But thanks again, Tim, for, for all the good work. And, you know, we will ask you to continue reporting in the future because as I said, we are following this with, with, you know, a lot of interest, actually. Thank you. Okay, so this takes us to the end of the open to a service question session. Sorry, I don't see any questions. Okay, so we're gonna break for, you know, five minutes, but please make it five minutes, not longer than that. And we will be back at 5:20 using the link that Kevin just sent. So just remember, you have to, to use the other link because that's an executive session. And, and we will take it from there. So if you can stop the recording now, Kevin, please.